BD and marketing. My name is Ben York. For those who don't know, I think everybody here might be acquainted with me by this by this stage. But my role is more marketing related and I do get involved with the BD side as well. So. Cool.
I have a question from YouTube. That's not a scarf, that's our hoodie.
Ah, yes. I think we could jump in, talk a little bit about what we're doing at Wu Trade and the the idea of how, especially considering CZ's tweet yesterday where he talked about how many tokens have exposure to both the DeFi side and the C-Fi side. And obviously, we have our roots in the institutional trading side. But we are, you know, started as a way for capturing a lot of flow from exchanges, centralized exchanges, because Kronos was being so so active in the space and they were very large traders on so many different platforms that other platforms were reaching out saying, hey, can you trade on our platform? But that creates a big risk and a lot of time and resources when you have to connect to all these exchanges, go through the KYC processes, and then deposit assets into the platform, right? So they came up with the idea that we are going to create a centralized pool for for this, for other exchanges to connect to them. And obviously, this is not a unique idea. This comes from their roots in traditional finance, running dark pools. But it was really just a way to connect and aggregate all the liquidity. And so far, it's been very positive, but we have about fifteen to twenty institutional clients connected to us now. Some of the big ones like MXC, Gate, Bitmax, they're connected to the service now. And it's it's running about, I think, as we expected, and volume is increasing very, very quickly on that. So that is that is one aspect where we capture flow from the C-Fi side. What was new was on the DeFi side where we were putting capital on chain. And having capital on chain allows our market makers to provide really good price execution to anyone who is using some sort of DeFi aggregator like One Inch. And so we're able to capture from the DeFi side as well. And so we're hoping to leverage these two, C-Fi and DeFi, to to really bring the best liquidity in the space, zero fee trading and the best price execution. So that's what we're doing. But again, yeah, I guess I don't want to talk too much here. So if we maybe we can get into some questions. I don't know if anybody here has any questions they want to ask directly, and we can get started with that. If not, maybe Mitchell or somebody could maybe give us some some feedback or ideas as well. Someone on the clubhouse. Any brave souls out there who want to speak up? If not, we can jump into some more things here.
Question, just maybe to recap, since that was all, could be some of the partnerships that have happened? Like, I know Dodo is one example, and I think there's been a few other, both on the C-Fi and the DeFi side.
Okay, partnerships, let's see, I mean.
There were a few.
There were a few, yes. On the DeFi side, what we're looking for, we are platform agnostic, and we'll talk about this a little bit more later. But we're looking for anywhere where there is trade volume and there are users, right? And so this is something that in the DeFi space is growing very quickly. We've seen like BSC kind of shoot up and a lot of platforms on BSC. Also Solana is now going very, growing very quickly. A lot of the layer twos are growing very quickly. So we are monitoring. We see a platform that has a lot of. Issue where they can have a better service through better. That's something that we are very keen to talk to. And what's actually. Recently, I think you may have seen that we we announced with Algarand and Cardano that we were going to support their ecosystems. There was a lot of, there was a very positive response from other players who also want this. Because at the end of the day, who doesn't want better liquidity, right? Who doesn't want their users to have access to better price execution with very low fees? So it's a no brainer that people are going to keep, you know, reaching out to us. And our partnerships are very unique in that it's not, you know, hey, use our service and, you know, pay us for this, right? Because a lot of it is is free when we we build these on-chain pools, right? We're not asking them to, you know, give us a big grant and support us because we have the business model in place. And this is very unique, I think, in the blockchain space. If you've been around since like twenty seventeen and beyond, a lot of projects were formed without the business model, right? They were, they were trying to solve problems that maybe didn't exist, or they thought would be, you know, solvable with blockchain technology. But, you know, as in the trading space, the business model is very solid. As a platform, trading platform, it's one of the probably the biggest business models in the space. So it's a great opportunity and we can come to any platform that has users in volume and say, hey, why don't we, you know, make something like this happen? And the response is always is very good. Some of the platforms that we talked to recently in the DeFi space, they are also really interested in guys like Rand and Mark and Jack, their experience as traders, because they're, these DeFi platforms, they're created by, you know, indie software developers, maybe don't have the same experience on trading that we do. So they can learn a lot about how to improve liquidity on their token and what these big institutional traders are looking for, right? Because I think that's the ultimate goal, is to capture more institutional flow as well as retail, right? That's how the whole industry is going to grow and mature. So everyone's very eager to start the conversation, and when they find out more about our background, that, you know, they're very interested in having a a longer term. So we're going to try to leverage that. And we're not going too heavy on placing any bets at this stage because the conservative approach is to see how the industry develops. And I, you know, I think that's, that's a smart strategy now, especially how dynamic DeFi can be, right? You know, one month, this is very popular, and then the next month, something comes out of nowhere and just takes over by storm. So, you know, we're going to be very agile and flexible and able to shift that way. On the C-Fi side, I I think we can have Rand talk about that a little bit more later. Actually, I don't know, Rand.
Sure. So there's twenty clients now on the C-Fi side. They're mostly exchanges and traders. So. If you were to place an order on Bitcoin or ETH, say, a Sendex, formerly Bitmax, or MXC, or Gate.io, or BinMart, you might be trading against Wu Trade. So that's kind of the effect that, that's kind of sort of the underlying liquidity network for a lot of these centralized exchanges. And the result is there's narrower spreads, better liquidity, and hopefully, the exchange will reduce your fees, right? So that's the ultimate goal, to reduce the overall trading cost for the trader. And obviously, you can do it on WEX and, you know, stake a few hundred WU and trading is free, right? So we have some, some guys who are doing that in in the beta currently. And to touch up a bit more about DeFi, that the state of the market is, I mean, every chain that has that is able to, is trying to build DeFi applications, right? I'm sure some of you are aware. And. They all need liquidity, so they want some sort of a swap, whether it's AMM or something else. And the, and the way that the, the DEX industry is evolving is that AMMs are gradually moving towards long tail assets, right? Because they compete on speed, not execution, speed of listing, not execution quality. And, you know, any hot new coin can go on Uniswap or Sushi Swap or whatever and get listed instantly and have liquidity from from stakers. But then the fees are very high, right? The thirty bips trading fees and sometimes sometimes through the slippage through the impairment loss. And AMMs are really good for stablecoins as well, because of the mean reverting nature of stablecoins. So then curve or curve-like products are useful because there's, you know, there's less or there's no IL from stablecoins because they're mean reverting in by nature. And now the liquidity for for major coins like Bitcoin, ETH, BNB, Dot, these are are lacking for AMMs. You don't actually need speed of listing for these tokens because they're everywhere anyways, right? What people want are, you know, lower transaction fees and lower slippage. So then AMMs don't really fulfill that. So then you can see the swaps and the, you know, the DEXs evolving where Uniswap B3 is essentially, it's almost like oracle-based pricing because it's narrowing, it's allowing the liquidity providers to narrow the range of prices and provide targeted liquidity, right? There's a lot of wasted capital in AMMs currently because everyone is just piling into this one pool and the trading actually happens around the, or sometimes a tight price range within, within a certain range around the, the, the mid. So then not all of that capital is used. So there's more, you know, innovative solutions like Uniswap V3, where you can shift that range around, provide targeted liquidity. And if you're good, you can capture a lot more of the fees, right? So then they increase the capital efficiency. And now that's, the way that operates is very similar to Market Maker, where the Market Maker quotes, right, by providing prices and and assets. So the, you know, assets around around that price. And that's essentially what we do. And that's what we've been doing for WuFi on Dodo. Essentially, Wu Trade inputs its prices from Wu Trade centralized on chain. So that's similar to what, you know, Uniswap B3 looks like, except it's not, not necessarily a range. And then Dodo actually has a parameter that allows us to adjust slippage. So then that's actually quite similar to what Uniswap is doing. And then the capital efficiency increases in multiples, right? Our turnover ratio for the WuFi pools are, you know, magnitudes higher than the turnover ratio for Uniswap. So you can see that evolving for for DEXs. And we think that's going to happen. That's going to continue evolving and such. And then you can see how, how people want lower fees and and lower transaction slippage just by the sheer, sheer amount of volume that we've been generating about a month on BSC. And it hit about seventy million dollars a day. And a lot of that is flow from aggregators like One Inch Open Ocean. That goes to the WuFi pools and. Yeah, so people want, for for the major points, people want lower costs, right? It's a, it's a simple thing to to understand and thought their needs.
But Rand, in following up on that, and the, somebody in the YouTube chat, they were asking about the token utility for the Wu token on the DeFi side. Because it's great that we can capture all this volume, but how does that benefit the Wu token?
Right, so we're trying to figure that out right now. To be honest, that's the other attempt, right? The success of the, of, of going into D5 for Wu Trade was kind of a surprise. But we see clearly the direction. And right now, WuFi is getting implemented on ETH via Xerox Protocol and other, other swaps where where implement, so as Ben said earlier, we want to be anywhere where there's traders with, you know, with a solid tech, any chain with traders has solid tech, has a ton of users, but not the liquidity to hold it together. So any chain, whether it's on our, whether it's near Avalanche or the ETH, their twos, when there's traders, we want to be there. And that creates a real liquidity network, right? Once we're on, to facilitate aggregation of liquidity on chain and off chain, to further reduce spreads, further reduce costs. And eventually, even cross-chain swaps, right? If we had enough collateral on each chain, whether it's by us or by LPs currently, it's by us, then potentially, people can just trade across chains, right? Because we have collateral on every single, every single chain that has users. So that's kind of what the future might look like. In terms of what it would do for token holders, so, so the pools that we have on BSC are actually, actually quite profitable. I mean, the APYs are super high because of the, the terminal rates, right? So if we're able to profit off of off of each trade, just like in centralized Wu Trade, without charging. I mean, the, the fees that are charged on the BSC pools are five basis points. That's magnitudes lower than, than the average AMM, right? So then that's why there's so much flow going to these pools. So we're providing traders to, you know, a service and they can trade for much cheaper costs. And we, we, we implement this on every chain, and so then the volume expected will go up dramatically. And these pools will be profitable. So then all we were trying to do now is figure out how to get these profits to the Wu holders. And it would be some sort of a staking on chain or off chain. So potentially, people who hold Wu would, would stay those Wu in in a pool somewhere on chain or on WEX, and they will get a piece of these profits. So I mean, that's the thinking right now, but then the, the details are not cashed out yet.
Yeah, and I think that's a positive because like I was saying earlier, like a lot of blockchains, they have an idea, they have, they have a a fee structure in place, but they don't have any usage. But on the other hand, we're, we're getting a lot of usage and then turning that into, you know, value for the token holders, that's a much better problem to have than the other way around, where you don't have usage. So, you know, yeah, it's something that I think we can, we can find a good solution down the road and it's going to create a lot of opportunities for for people on the DeFi side. So that was an honest answer. I hope that answers your question. I don't know, does somebody else in the clubhouse, do they have any more questions that they want to throw out there before we move on?
Yeah, I, Ken, Kenneth here with Vexchange. I have a decentralized exchange on, on B-chain. And through this discussion, kind of curious on how, so let's say B-chain or Vexchange wanted to plug into Wu's liquidity. How would they go about doing that? Is it kind of a plug and play system? Is there documents, APIs, or is that kind of something? And this is just for anyone to know. Do we have to contact you guys directly or what's kind of the process to tap into Wu Trade?
I can answer that. So there's two ways. One is if you were to, I mean, Wu Trade centralized has a full set of APIs. It's essentially the same as an exchange. So there's a full set of RESTful and WebSockets APIs, just like if we were to connect to Binance. So we have one instance where a DEX connects to centralized Wu Trade. This is the same way that, you know, MXC or Gate.io connects to Wu Trade. And then it trades through Wu Trade, right? So that's something that's possible. The other way would be through our DeFi solution. So then on, on every chain, when we create pools, it's almost, it's essentially a DEX, right? And then any aggregator can actually flow trades to the DEX. So that's why One Inch Open Ocean, they flow trades to, they route trades through our pools. And ETH, so ETH, so ETH, so. Pools on, on B-chain. Depends on the nature of your DEX, whether it's an AMM or able to accept more base coding or can aggregate other, other pools. But I think we'll need some sort of a setup on, on B-chain. And then the consideration of Wu Trade in general is again, how many users are on the chain and on the DEX? And how many potential users will be there to trade once we're set up, assuming, you know, WuFi provides the best liquidity? You know, how does that rank in comparison to the other chains, DEXs out there? So we're always doing this prioritization to capture, you know, the most, the highest amount of volume in, you know, in the on-chain space.
Right, and another consideration with B-chain is the, the diversity of assets that they have. Right now, if you look at just like Bet, Vitor, and then a few other very small coins. So I mean, we're obviously looking for, for much larger assets that have very high trading volume because then it's easier to aggregate, you know, among, among different venues. So if, you know, the strength of ETH, the ETH assets with USDT, which is pretty ubiquitous, and then like Link, Dot, well, another BTC that is, that exists on, on ETH. And then, well, on, on BSC, we're also doing BNB. So that's a very, I mean, BNB is on pretty much every platform, so that makes it a lot easier to do that. But I don't know, Kenneth, does, does that answer your question? Do you have any follow-ups there?
No, yeah, that was, it seems like Rand covered all the different sides of which people, to me, which people can integrate with Wu Trade, which was great to hear. Yeah, overall, it was a great answer. My question was answered. I was just generally curious about the process of connecting to you guys. So, yeah, we're, we're definitely not in a place to do that, but maybe it's nice to hear that you got, you got the pieces covered, so thank you.
Kenneth, as a developer yourself, and you, you have a good eye for the front-end stuff. I mean, do you have any feedback for us on what we've been building so far?
Looking at, I mean, it's great, like the module system of WEX, it's great stuff. As a developer slash designer, the designs you guys are putting out, all great stuff. So I even went in there, looked at the console, looked at all that stuff. And, yeah, everything works really well and smooth. A mobile experience would be interesting, though very difficult with the platform you guys have going on. But that's something that popped into my brain. Not requesting it, saying you guys should have more. But when initially I went to the website, I, what popped into my brain was how the mobile experience worked. But I think that's, that's probably here, yeah, here or there.
Well, I, I think we're going to actually touch on that a little bit later. One of our product managers is here, and we'll, we'll jump into the mobile thing a little bit later. But yeah, that's, that's a good point. I think Carter wanted to say something. I saw that his, his mute symbol went off right before Kenneth jumped in there. So did you have something for us, Carter? Did you want to ask something or add something to the conversation?
Yeah, sure. So for those of you who don't know me, I'm Carter. I actually run a pawnbroker trading firm. And my question actually relates to the trading experience. So I'm kind of curious how you guys address front-running if you're having things across multiple chains. So let's say there's an order and I'm submitting a million dollar buy order on Solana. If someone's using Binance Smart Chain or even Ethereum Layer Two, Solana is still likely to be faster. So then couldn't, isn't the advantage always going to be to the person who uses Solana? Or how do you basically make a fair playing field when having lower execution across all these different chains with different speeds and finality times?
Well, I knew it was going to be a good question.
Very much. Yeah, it's a really good question. So, you know, the way we see each chain is actually similar to an exchange, right? So then if you think about how, how DEXs are, how an order goes through each chain, an order that goes through One Inch potentially gets routed to, I mean, it gets routed to a series of next best prices, right? And quantities. So they scan for Uniswap, Sushi, you know, Matcha, all these, all these venues for the best execution and routes through them. The process of routing is very similar to an order book, right? Then each chain is essentially a giant order book. And so then we see it, you know, as, as each chain is one large exchange. And each chain, and then the way we're trading on centralized exchanges now, well, Kronos is, is many different exchanges. We trade on, you know, like fifteen or so exchanges. And each exchange has a different, has a different set of APIs and, and has latency, right? Some exchanges are located AWS Tokyo, somewhere. Alibaba Cloud, Hong Kong, or a physical server in, in Netherlands. Right, so then there's, so what you're describing is latency, right? It's all types of latency-related issues for, for each chain. And then Wu Trade, obviously, as like the exchange, were located on Google Cloud. It also has, there's also latency risk for the user. So the short answer is we're, we're pretty experienced in, in latent in the issue of latency, how to avoid getting front-run, because that issue exists for, for us on the other venues, and how to avoid letting the users get front-run you know, in our own venue. Now, on BSC, you know, on blockchains in general, the, you know, the issues, the front-running issues with this. On BSC, Dodo actually has a solution for front-running so that, you know, the average user just get front-run on Dodo. But we're in talks with a lot of mighty pools on ETH, like F2 Pool, where they have solutions for, for front-running as well. So, you know, in the, in the same fashion that we talk to exchanges about colocation, where that's just the act of getting our servers as close as possible, as possible to their servers to avoid being slower than the, everybody else, you know? Colocation is kind of, like, it's kind of similar to how miners, you know, the position of miners for, for the chains or the nodes, the validators, in that, you know, by working with them, you know, they have, they have certain solutions to avoid the issue of latency.
Why is it still working?
Thanks for speaking.
Neil's here.
Hopefully, yeah.
Before I'm on every other chain, so, um, that's kind of, you know, I was just curious about how you guys addressed it. And then when you guys, actually, people live, I mean, I could just try it and then tell you guys what you want to run. That's a pretty simple solution.
Yeah, that's, that's very interesting. So then what you're describing of front-running on one chain versus other chains, you know, that's what we call arbitrage, right? So then, you know, there's actually a difference, what we call lead lag effects, different prices of different centralized exchanges and now decentralized exchanges and decentralized exchanges versus centralized exchanges. So that phenomenon already exists in this centralized world, and now you just add in the decentralized. So it is quite interesting how this, this will all turn out. And, you know, to be honest, we don't, we don't know exactly how it will turn out, given the market dynamics. But we definitely see all these price discrepancies between, you know, ETH and BSC, Layer One and Layer Two. You know, we're not trading on Solana yet, so that, but I hear that there's all types of discrepancies there. So then, you know, this prevents, this provides additional opportunities for arbitrators to, to arbitrage across the different chains, just like they arbitrage across the different exchanges. And it'll make everything, you know, more dynamic and has more volume. On our Dodo pools on BSC, actually, lots of people who trade via our pools are arbitrators. They arbitrage our prices against, you know, PancakeSwap on BSC because we have better prices. And, you know, they're, they're profiting off of that, you know, because our, our fees are lower. But, you know, that doesn't mean Wu Trade is losing money, it just means that the market is getting more efficient.
Yeah, yeah, and it's really interesting when you look at the, the pools and where the transactions are coming from. Like, it's, it's, a lot of it is very automated. So, you know, that's how DeFi, I think, is going to be moving forward. It's not going to be people going onto Uniswap and making trades. A lot of it is going to be coming from arbitrage and more automated processes. So, I mean, that's, that just speaks to the amount of volume increase that potential there is out there right now. Maybe we could jump, there's some YouTube questions that are coming in there. And someone was asking about, CJ Wheelock had a question, we're going to get to that a little bit later. I think we're going to save that for the end. Somebody was asking about the token supply timeline for unlocking tokens. So I don't know if Rand, if you want to talk about how we're going to do like advisor team tokens? I know this is a, this is a big, a big issue in the space where, you know, people buy into products and then the, the team gets their token and then dumps on them. So, yeah, maybe Rand, if you want to speak to that a little bit, or, or if not, maybe I could do it as well.
Sure. You know, we used to have this chart, that's very clear, the token unlock schedule on the website. I think we, we need to have it back. For some reason, it's gone now. But the, the tokens are, are structured as such. The investors who represent slightly less than twenty different of all the, the tokens were three rounds. Round one is twenty-four months when we unlock. Round two is six months. Round three is five months. And, and the token vesting started at the end of October, when this last October, the list happened. So as of now, the round two and round three tokens are fully vested. The way we, the way people claim tokens are via our smart contract that we created, where they can claim tokens on a block-by-block basis. And you can see the smart contracts, like they're scanning. Whereas the majority of tokens are still vesting in the round one guise. You can see that as well. It's one of the top addresses. So this is all quite transparent. For team tokens, they're set to start vesting at the end of this month. So next week. And the team tokens represent twenty percent of the box supply. And as of now, only about ten percent or so of team tokens have been allocated to existing team members. And these are when you're vesting for three and a half years, also block-by-block basis. So they're investing for a very long time. And this is the same case with advisor tokens, which represent five percent. The natural allocated tokens for, you know, for advisors, I think it's about one percent. So there's actually not a ton of supply coming to the market, especially on a month-by-month basis because of the long vesting schedule. So, you know, as a project, we're not so worried. And especially, these are the team, the key supporters, because it's vesting over a very long time. When we calculated this in terms of, I mean, because we all, we have to try to anticipate sell pressure, right? So the most amount of token released happens in the first five and six months, when the second round, the second and third round tokens are vesting. And after, you know, now that's, that's already happened as of the end of March. You know, we're not, we're not so worried, to be honest. So, I mean, that also kind of explains, I think, one of the reasons for the run-up in the price since then.
Yeah. And definitely, like, it is in everybody's best interest at this, at this team, you know, for the price to not be impacted by selling pressure. So I think, you know, this team, a lot of the people here, especially when you get to look at guys like Jack and Mark, I mean, they're very successful traders, and they don't view the token unlocks as a chance to, you know, retire and move to some island in the South Pacific. So, you know, we get a lot of concerned questions about that, but it's always like, from my perspective, it's always like, well, why would anyone want to do anything to, you know, hurt the token price? Because that just makes all elements of our, you know, what we're doing harder to do. And there's a very long-term vision with this project. So, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's something that I understand why investors are concerned about, but I feel like Rand's question, or Rand's answer, I hope, I hope that alleviated some fears or concerns that were out there. Let's see if there's some other questions on YouTube. This one was about Series A funding, because I know it's on the roadmap. And I know a lot of people are also kind of worried about, like, if we're, you know, selling equity to, to large players and then suddenly the equity would become the focus and not the token price. And I know this was something that we've seen a lot before in the Telegram chats. But with regards to the Series A, and I hate to go back to, keep going back to Rand, making him answer all these questions, but this is more his, his area. He's, he's the one helping with this. So maybe Rand, you could jump in there.
Sure. So I think as time progresses, what we're, what we're going to do is give more and more value of the token, to the value of the business to token holders. You know, the Series A was planned in the past, and as time progressed, you know, it's come to our understanding that in order to make WuTrade truly successful and develop a huge ecosystem, it has to be through, it's not going to be through equity, right? I mean, I mean, the way that, you know, blockchain projects work generally and how they're successful is that every, every user or supporter can be a stakeholder, right? And it's not possible through equity. So then equity, you know, so far, there's only been a few investors, including Dragon Ball Capital, Hashkey Capital, these are some of the earlier supporters, who also have tokens. I think we're, we're, what we're doing now is we're always on the lookout for more strategic token investors who can, who can help us, who help the ecosystem. So then the idea again is to have all the supporters of WuTrade and users of WuTrade network, or Uphi, or WEX, all onboard, contributing to the ecosystem and getting boarded to the tokens. And we want these people to be the token holders. So, I mean, capital is not so much an issue for WuTrade. As of now, it's more about just getting more supporters onto the platform, using the products, holding the token, and helping, you know, grow the whole pie.
Yeah. And you mentioned something important there about just getting stakeholders on board. And I know that one of the big questions that we get a lot is about our listing policy, about when we're going to push for listing on more exchanges. Obviously, people always want to know about Binance. And something that George, who's on our team, he mentioned in the Telegram chat before, about our priority with exchanges is we don't want to just create these transactional relationships where we approach them and then we give them a large sum of money or bonus tokens to distribute via Launchpad function. You know, we want to create, you know, relationships with these exchanges. These big exchanges actually become stakeholders in the ecosystem, either by becoming a client, becoming a partner, a strategic partner, you know, possibly even an investor. Like, these are different things that, that could get these exchanges, who are in a very powerful position, to help drive WuTrade forward. So, you know, we're, we're very, very keen to get listed on more exchanges. And part of that is, is an issue with the legal side, making sure that people, well, certain, certain documents are needed in order to have exchanges who have US customers regarding the token as a security. So that's something that they're, they're going through. But the other part is also that we want to make sure when we reach agreements with these exchanges that they are stakeholders and they do help us in more ways than just the listing. Because the listing is a very short-term thing, right? People are always looking forward to the listing, and then the listing event happens, maybe the token pump, the price pumps twenty percent, fifty percent, and then a few days later, it's trends back to where it was before, right? Obviously, it is much more convenient if you are a user of a big exchange to have it on there. But I think there is a process to, to the way we're doing things, and it's a very sustainable one. Yeah. So that's the question. I know everyone always wants to know when Binance. So, yeah. I know Keisha, there's a, on the Clubhouse, guy Keisha, he had his hand up. Maybe he wants to ask us a question. Now would be a good time for that.
Hi, how are you? I have a feedback and.
Awesome.
Yeah, in reading your, what are, what are your thoughts? Just really, really appreciate the level of transparency that you guys provide. But they, you know, the challenge. So my question was how US traders, if are able to participate in beta, beta? And also like if not, if you guys want to show us, do you have a US strategy to attract more American traders?
Yes, I can, I can take that.
That's good.
We certainly appreciate, like, we certainly appreciate the, the US market. It's a huge market, and we want to get more US traders. Unfortunately, right now, the only possible way currently is through, through DeFi, which serves, services global users, right? We don't have a WuTrade US yet. We're, we're working on that, but there's a lot of legal hurdles and compliance hurdles to get through. We want to be fully compliant in the US in a similar way that, you know, say, Binance US is, we want to get the, you know, to acquire licenses in the US before we conduct any sort of business there. So right now, we do not allow US users onto WEX, unfortunately, because of regulatory reasons. But it is in the plan. It is in the works and the hope to, to make this happen in the near future. But it will take some time, because there's a lot of hurdles to do.
I think we can also add that we're in some advisor on DeFi.
I want to have a question to you also. If I have a, let's say like a BBI fund that I do trading operations through, would I still qualify to access the WuTrade trading platform? Or does it, is it not allowed to anyone who's operating in the US at all?
Non-US entities are okay. We go through, we have the standard KYC process now. We'll, we're, we'll be onboarding Junio and other service providers like Chainalysis to WEX. So then, after going through the KYC process, you know, you can trade. So then, you know, that automatically restricts certain areas. And it's not just the US. It's a, it's a bunch of countries that, you know, the typical exchange would have to exclude due to, you know, due to the regulatory reasons.
Yeah. Keisha, thank you for the feedback, by the way. And then, like, another thing that we, Julia just mentioned it, but we were muted. You know, it's always about trying to find more, more opportunities for W token holders to get involved via DeFi. And I know everybody's been asking about, you know, like, they, they want to know about like when BSC, because right now, BSC is really popular. And that's something that we're, we're very aware of. And the reason that that didn't happen right away is because the current bridge solutions that are out there, there is a certain risk when you use them, that if the, the bridge didn't function properly, you might end up with, you know, an increasing supply or some, some strange thing happening there. But it sounds like that we're, we're very close on that to finding a solution that passes our risk management policies. And, you know, when that happens, I think that users will be able to access a lot more functionality with the W token, more staking, more liquidity provision, possibly lending, you know, all these things that come with DeFi. And so hopefully, that will, you know, alleviate some of the, for, for users in, all over the world to, to be able to get involved with the ecosystem.
Thank you.
No problem. Any, any other questions on Clubhouse? I see Marino just joined the stage. Do you want to fire? Go ahead, Mitchell.
Thanks, Ben. I was actually just gonna ask about derivatives. We've been talking a lot about spot trading. And I was just wondering if there's any plans for derivatives, either on DeFi or on the WEX platform itself?
Rand, do you want to talk about derivatives?
Sure. Futures is definitely going to be, right now, there's actually, there's leverage already on WEX. Not, not a whole lot of leverage. Futures will be implemented. It's in the, it's in the works for WEX. And for DeFi, it's a project that we're working on. So we can't reveal too much yet, but, you know, leveraged trading on DeFi is certainly the next trend. And we were very aware of the fact that in C5, more than two-thirds of volumes are through futures derivatives. And it's the same for, you know, Kronos, the trader. There's a lot more volume traded on derivatives than spot. And we believe that in DeFi, it will be something similar. I mean, one of the issues that we see now are a lot of the derivatives, DeFi platforms have silo, silo of liquidity, whether it's order book-based or swap-based. It's more, it's rather difficult for composability, like, like it is for spot, where one entry, you know, another aggregator can turn route to each other. And that sort of, you know, that, that just connects all the, for derivatives, it's not, it's not the case currently. So we're trying to figure out a solution for that.
Okay, great. And I assume that answers Mitchell's questions. Maybe we can move on to Marino, if you've got that question for us now. Welcome to the stage, Marino.
Yeah. So I guess Rand mentioned you guys, so Kronos is trading on fifteen exchanges at the moment, centralized exchanges. And then you guys see every chain as an exchange. So I guess kind of makes sense that WuTrade is kind of like the way to scale Kronos up in the sense that you're gonna be like aggregating all the liquidity from every single change and making like liquidity interoperable, in a sense. If that makes sense, I don't know if it's really a question, it's more of a thought, if that's kind of like the relationship they win Kronos and Wu.
That's, that's a good question. The goal of WuTrade is certainly what you described, to make liquidity interoperable across exchanges and across chains, right? I mean, that's kind of how it is in the traditional markets, where we came from, where there's deep liquidity and it's connected by market maker for dark pools across different brokers. And it becomes very efficient and it's not costly. It's very cheap and it's a better user experience for traders. That's what we want to bring to QuickGo. You know, we want to lower the cost of trading to as low as possible, zero fees, minimal slippage. And I think there's a long way to go, but we're able to, you know, now, I mean, for WEX, that's the case, right? For our partners, we're working to influence them and to, you know, and to bring, bring about this experience for, for their traders. And it's, you know, it's doable for DeFi. In the case of Dodo, we load it down to five bips, and the next step is shut it lower down to zero again, right? So that's what we're working on. In terms of whether WuTrade is simply a method to scale Kronos, I would say no. WuTrade is very fortunate to have Kronos to bootstrap liquidity, right? I mean, if it were just an exchange, you know, there's many exchanges out there who have a decent product with no liquidity, because of the lack of a, you know, strong market makers, strong liquidity providers on the platform. And no liquidity means that traders do not want to trade there. So we're fortunate to have Kronos. But Kronos is not going to be the only market maker for WuTrade. We're in talks with other market makers, some of which who have invested in WuTrade. I mean, the whole goal for WuTrade is to have the best liquidity possible, right? Now, if Kronos were able to provide that, then so be it. But if not, we have other liquidity providers helping the ecosystem. So the goal is always to have the best and the cheapest liquidity.
Interesting. Marino, any, any follow-up on that? Does that answer your, well, it wasn't really a question, but a thought?
Yeah, no, I mean, I guess I just really want to, I mean, I'm, I'm an investor. I'm like all in, in Wu at the moment, for a while, for a while, I've been. Just, just, just wanted to, to really like, I guess, understand from the market-making side of things, you know, how, how you will, yeah, I guess it makes sense that you're gonna be, you know, you need, you need a liquidity network, which is just not, not out there at the moment to. I mean, I guess if you're gonna, like, the guy who asked about Solana earlier on, like, you're kind of gonna need like a centralized place to aggregate all, all those trades. That's the way I see it, either way.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that's one of the strengths of WuTrade is that, you know, they're able to leverage both sides of C5 and DeFi. And, you know, obviously, the C5 has certain advantages with the speed and the latency. And DeFi has more in terms of less like counterparty risk and, and other, other things like that. But it's, yeah, I, that's, that's definitely one of the strengths. And one thing that separates and differentiates WuTrade as a project, that they have a very clear understanding and experience and people who are in all these different, these different verticals within blockchain. So, you know, usually when you look at some other projects, they're, they have So, uh, you know, usually when you look at some other projects, they're, they have a lot of developers, or maybe they're, they're more business oriented, but they lack the development skills. And I think, you know, Wu Trade is one of the places that checks all the boxes, uh, not trying to get too over promotional. But I mean, that, that's always one thing that, that strikes me, you know, is, is differentiating for, for Wu Trade.
Yeah, I mean, I guess one of the things with, I just, uh, last, a last thought, one of the things with DeFi is that it's like, it's quite flexible. So if, if someone came up with a, with a, an APY protocol to, like, get some yield from whatever, you know, whatever, uh, connection or whatever, whatever way they thought, they could just do it instantaneously. Um, and so one of my fears is like, I, I guess I would love for Wu Trade to have that flexibility for someone to just come in and plug it to the system and access that liquidity.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Um, Rand, do you want to respond to that? I think.
Yeah, absolutely. I thi- I think we, we've been, I mean, we're kind of, we're not the earliest guys in DeFi, and we've been wowed by, by everything. You know, for someone, honestly, for someone to connect and trade C5 via the standard API, just like connecting to finance, it takes a few days, maybe even a week or two. It's the same way, same amount of time that when Chronos connects to, uh, you know, Hobi or, or Coinbase, it takes, it takes a few days and lots of conversations with, uh, the, the tech team for the, for the exchange. For, for DeFi, I mean, it's, everything's open source, right? One Inch takes a look at the pools and they're, they're, the, the flows are routing in after, after a day. So it's a much simpler and easier experience, and we realize that, and, uh, how easy it is to share liquidity and to have, to, to connect to each other. Um, and, you know, the, the value that, uh, the Wu Five pools provide via the, the low cost can be instantly realized by the aggregators and their users. Um, so this is exactly what we want to do. We want to build on every chain, um, pools that's easily connected, that people can easily connect to, uh, to enjoy the, the low fees and the deep liquidity. And it's much easier to do this on-chain than off-chain. So then, you know, we're doing a full-scale push into DeFi, um, you know, to bring, to bring our liquidity, uh, you know, to those traders. You know, and actually, actually a byproduct of this has been the Oracle, that, uh, what we call the Oracle, um, where hence the, we're putting, uh, you know, C5 prices on-chain, uh, at, at a rapid speed, uh, and, you know, at higher frequencies and at higher precision than something like, um, like a Chainlink. Uh, the, the, the price-sensitive protocols are very keen to try out our Oracle. I mean, we believe that every single venue that needs an Oracle should have multiple Oracles, uh, just to ensure stability. So then, you know, there's, there's applications on BSC that has approached us, and there's one that has already started using, um, our Oracle, which is simply a byproduct of, of the, uh, the Wu Five servers, um, because it's, it's higher precision and, uh, higher frequency.
Yeah. I, I want.
I actually think that, um, oh, sorry about that.
Go, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, Carter.
Yeah, so I think that, I mean, the Wu Oracle is one of the things that I find, uh, I mean, probably the most fascinating thing because I think people tend to underestimate the importance of having a highly sensitive Oracle that's very, very quick, especially in the context of trading. So if you're using Oracle like Link that's very generalized, it's great for what it does as an overall purpose Oracle. But if you're having a, a high, if you need a high-speed Oracle or running very quick applications on it, then Link wouldn't necessarily be ideal. So that's where someone like the Wu Oracle comes in, and just given how it's calculated, it's just, I mean, there, there's no way that a Link Oracle could ever be able to compete just in terms of just a raw speed. And that just adds to the entire thesis of Wu of just aggregating liquidity across exchanges because the more exchanges that use the Wu Oracle as a pricing source and incorporate it into its Oracle index, then naturally, the more flow will be going through the Wu Five pools as well as the other, um, like, the other tenets of the Wu Trade exchange network. So I think that, I mean, for anyone out there curious or just wants to learn more about the Wu Trade engine stuff, I mean, I'd definitely recommend looking into anything you can about Oracles and how they could apply to Wu because, I mean, in my view, that's probably one of the biggest sources of potential upside. And I think I've actually heard team members mention how it's been, you know, quite successful and kind of a sleeper hit and how things have developed over time. So, yeah, definitely the Wu Oracle is something to keep my eye on.
Yeah, and just to add on to that point, um, I mean, you mentioned Chainlink and, and you mentioned the word compete. I think, like, we're definitely not competing with Chainlink for, like, it's, our pricing Oracle is very specific for, for people who have very demanding trading needs, right? So I think it's definitely a market where Chainlink will continue to grow into their space, but we'll, we'll be more, uh, focused on trading platforms that have more, you know, demands for the, the pricing precision and faster updating times and things like that. So that's, I mean, that's another thing with Wu Trade is like, there's, there's really, they, they always ask, what are the competitors? And we don't really have any. Like, if I had to think of a competitor, uh, it would be really hard because i- i- is a competitor, as they grow, it's just another trading space or a trading platform that can be aggregated and integrated. So, um, it's, yeah, I mean, that's definitely a strength of ours, and it's part of the ethos, I think, of DeFi, where we, we're about collaboration. And so we, we're very close with Chainlink, and, and they, we've had discussions about our Oracle and, you know, how it, how it fits into the DeFi ecosystem, and they don't view us as a threat. And obviously, a lot of our community has, um, you know, some of them are Chainlink holders, and so we don't want to, to make people think that we're going after that piece of the pie. Um, so, yeah. So, um, there, we had some feedback in the chat. They said that Mar- Marino has a beautiful voice. Uh, that's, that's good to know.
Uh, we have Fernando, who just joined the chat. Do you have any questions, Fernando?
Fernando, you're up.
Oh, there we go. How's it going, everyone?
Going good. Welcome, Fernando.
Hey, thanks for having me. Kind of jumped a little late here, but, uh, I just got one quick question. Besides Dodo, are there any other DEXs that are in the pipeline, like to integrate? Or has expressed any, uh, interest in integrating?
Um, yes, well, I mean, I guess that matters, like, what your definition of a DEX is, right? So it's, it's kind of hard to integrate with a, like, a standard AMM because those, those are more like, uh, islands, I guess, in DeFi space where, uh, their liquidity providers, they want to reward their liquidity providers with their trading fees. So, uh, that, that is a little bit challenging, but we're seeing a lot of platforms move to an aggregation model with things like Paraswap, One Inch, uh, Dodo is building that, they have an aggregator. Um, Open Ocean was another one that Rand mentioned, uh, and then things like D-Bang, Zaprify, Zerion. These are all dashboards where, uh, people are able to make trades, and the selling point is that they just route to the best price. They don't care who it is, who's providing the liquidity, they just, they want the best price, uh, or the lowest fee, depending on, uh, you know, the, the parameters on One Inch. But, well, you know, what we're seeing, what we're, what we're anticipating is that eventually, more and more DeFi will be like this because people, the user, you don't really care who is benefiting from your fees, you just want to be paying fewer fees. So the platforms, any platform that offers this service, they're going to come to us because they want to have the best price execution for their users. Because that's the only way they can keep users, right? That's the only way they can be sticky, is if they can show everybody else definitively, you know, that they're, that you get a better price on their platform. So something, uh, I don't know if we're supposed to mention it, but Rand already did, so I might as well talk about this, um, was the, the Zero X. Uh, I know that they're testing that right now, like, all the, the coding part is already completed. And after testing, um, which involves, like, the trading site as well, uh, that's going to go live, which means our Wu Five pools will not just be on BSC, they'll also be on Ethereum, which is, uh, exciting because of the volume on Ethereum, uh, and the diversity of assets that is on Ethereum. There are a lot more combinations of things you can do there. Um, uh, there's different challenges, obviously, because of the block times and the fees, but, you know, it, by targeting perhaps maybe, uh, higher volume orders, it would be, uh, you know, there, there's a big market that can be captured. So Zero X is a big one, and then from Zero X, there's things like Paraswap that also use the Zero X, uh, algorithm. And that was something we experienced with BSC, was once we integrated with Dodo, we set up a call with One Inch, and this is before we scaled up the, the DeFi pools, they're very small. And we, we said, we started these pools, would you be able to connect to us? And they, 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 before even looking at anything, they said, wait, you, you're on Dodo. Well, we're already connected to Dodo. And so we went back and checked, and it turned out like you could already hit our pools from One Inch without having any sort of discussion whatsoever. So I mean, that's kind of the, a, a nice anecdote for what we're expecting in DeFi. You know, where we create these pools, and then suddenly, we just get traffic from places we never even expected. Um, a lot of times, it's converting between different pairs. Like, for example, if somebody wanted to trade, like, cake for some other long-tail asset, the cake would transfer first to BNB, and then the BNB would transfer to BUSD, and then the BUSD would go to that long-tail asset. And so we would get the flow from the middle portion, which the user isn't even aware is happening. Um, so that's super interesting to see how the DeFi flow is working, um, and, and the volume. Like, we don't even need really to spend a lot of time on user acquisition and, and, and going out and getting people to try out our platform. And, um, yeah, because they're going to come from all over, and, uh, that's kind of the beauty of DeFi, I think. So, uh, yeah, obviously, to answer your question better, Fernando, I think that, well, we're very keen to work on, like, a very close level with some of these, uh, DEXs. Um, but even if we don't, we can still end up being very successful, so.
That makes sense. Thank you for answering that. Appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem. Um, it's, looks like we're at 11 o'clock already, so we might want to.
Talk to Morpheus. Discuss a bit of our product.
Maybe we can do that next time. I don't know, we have Morpheus on here, and he is, uh, well, Morpheus, why don't you give a quick? Yeah, quick introduction.
Hi. Hi, uh, hello, hi, I'm Morpheus, uh, I'm the product manager at Tru right now. So, uh, early, I, I s- I heard, like, what you just suggested, and also, like, the real tapes kind of stuff. So you can, you have any more questions with this, you can take it to our roadmap. So for the roadmap, we will release our mobile Q3 and also futures Q3. So you thought we might have another project we call the medium? And this is to be, to be, uh, to be decided, but like, uh, the medium will be hobby trading, or like, or it's social trading. So this is kind of our product strategy. So you can imagine that for C5, uh, what we want to do is like, right now, we want to target, like, active traders from now, uh, WEX. So after we have all this, uh, good experience and good liquidity, and so then can just attract more and more active traders, then we just move on and go further to have mobile experience and futures experience so that we can just attract it more and more investors. Then we would just have, uh, hobby trading and social trading to get everybody on board to have a better, like, investment opportunity. So that's kind of like a big intro to our roadmap and product strategy.
Cool. Thank you, Morpheus. Yeah, um, I mean, we definitely want to get guys who are working on the products more closely connected to the community, uh, which is one of the reasons we asked Morpheus to join here, because, uh, I know he very, he values the feedback that, that we're able to get on the community side. Um, and I guess you probably don't have that as much in, like, traditional industries and, and tech, uh, where you have a community that's incredibly engaged and willing to give, you know, feedback. So, um, that, yeah, that's what we're doing here. Uh, really quick, just want to finish some of the questions. Someone asked, uh, about marketing, and then someone asked about, uh, scaling overseas, and I think, um, well, they're not really related, but, um, in terms of the, I think the is- issues of scaling Wu overseas is, I think, a lot of it is, is trust, um, and when, you know, being in the market more. And I think geographically, uh, each region, you know, they know the players in their space. And, um, right now, our focus is, is very much in Asia, where there's a lot of trading and development talent. And I think we, we, internally, we've discussed, you know, having a much stronger presence overseas, and we're adding, uh, people to our team who can, you know, understand those regions better. We're looking for those, like we mentioned earlier, like, strategic investors who can help us in those regions. So I think, um, you know, going forward, you know, we want to be a very global presence, and that will help with scaling, um, overseas a lot. Uh, the last thing I wanted to get to, um, was about the marketing, and it is a follow-up on what Morpheus just said about, you know, we're focusing on active traders and professional traders because there is a balance between our institutional clients, the exchanges like Gate, MXC. I mean, they're, they're very good at targeting the re- the very retail traders. Uh, and there's a lot of, you know, headaches with retail traders because oftentimes, they're not very familiar with trading platforms. They need a lot of customer support, uh, and, and then the, the volume that they provide to the exchange, it may be like, uh, you know, very small amounts of, of capital. So, um, I mean, it, it follows like a business model where, like, 80% of your, your, your revenue comes from 20% of your clients, right? So, I mean, we're definitely focused on, on the bigger side, and then we can capture the retail flow, uh, more from DeFi and from other clients, because the ultimate goal is still to capture flow. And then once we have a solid base of really deep liquidity, um, and users, then it will be very easy to build more retail-friendly features on top of this. And that's something that's, um, it is something that Morpheus and his team are balancing into the product development and, and we're looking to do. But, yeah, I mean, um, we're not out there trying to get all the Safe Moon crowd, um, and the, the Doge fans on board right away. Like, we're definitely being, we're, we're being slightly selective with, with how we go about this, and the result is we're having, you know, a very strong community, as I think a lot of you have noticed, um, just from, you know, events like this. And, yeah, I mean, a very sticky user base, which is the ultimate goal.
From the product side and marketing side, we're definitely developing incentives that would encourage people not only to come, but to, to trade and get more volume to our platform.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, um, targeting different regions as well, so we can find the, these active traders within those regions, right? Um, it's not like a spray and pray kind of marketing solution where you just Google Ads and CoinMarketCap, right? Um, we, we definitely want to connect to the traders within those regions, um, and the, the institutions, um, the custodians, like, these players within these, uh, regions, and then, you know, trap a larger, uh, market share from there. But, yeah, I think we're almost out of time. Um, yeah, this, this hour goes so fast, and really, the goal was not to spend so much time talking. Um, it wasn't to interview Rand, but, I mean, Rand is a wealth of information, so when we do get the chance, it's always good to let him loose. Uh, I think we want to make these slightly more regular in the future, and, uh, you know, definitely want to spend more time having conversations and getting feedback. So, um, yeah, I mean, if that's it, does anyone have any closing comments or feedback to give us before we sign off?
Yeah, Ben?
Mm-hmm.
I've got one quick thing.
Okay.
Um, so you guys, you guys know me, I'm Zach. I am, uh, I run a, uh, pretty much a startup fund slash, uh, private wealth firm in, in America. But, uh, I, uh, so I come from a very traditional finance background and, and have worked at PE and all that. But, uh, I just wanted to kind of give a shout-out, uh, not only to the team, but to people like Morpheus and Rand that are kind of doing a lot of things behind the scenes that I bet a lot of people don't even realize. Running a firm is, is quite a bit. And, um, I think even having things like this is awesome because, you know, for, for people, especially whether they're early investors or they're just people that are really bought into the community and the project, I think that this goes so far, uh, not to mention, like, when, I don't know who it was earlier talking about it, but I think it's Keisha, talking about the reports and things like that. I think it's just something that's, uh, really appreciated from the community and for holders, as well as, uh, from a traditional finance guy, uh, you know, this is not something you really ever see, right? Um, and having both the platform that works well, but then also a team that's very responsive, I think, is, uh, is awesome. So, uh, I think it really sets the tone for the future ahead. So, uh, not necessarily a question, but just, uh, some positive feedback to kind of maybe end the night on.
Well, thanks, Zach. We really appreciate it. And, yeah, just, I mean, to follow up, like, Rand, for people who don't know him, is an absolute machine. Like, if you see his Google Calendar, like, it's just wall-to-wall, like, phone calls and meetings, uh, pretty much seven days a week. I mean, obviously, we're here on a Sunday, it's a Sunday morning here in Asia. Um, yeah, I mean, we could have been watching the MMA fights with everybody else, but we thought it would be better to focus on Wu. And, yeah, I mean, we want to be doing this more because it's very, it's a passion, and, and blockchain and crypto is, uh, you know, something that, once you fall down the rabbit hole, you can't get out of it. So we're in it for life, and, uh, yeah, we're, we're glad to be here, having these conversations. All right? I think that puts a nice cap on it. So thank you, Zach, and thank you, Rand, and Morpheus, and Mitchell, and Carter, Fernando, Kenneth, everybody else who joined and asked a question or list, uh, comments on YouTube. If we missed it, we'll try to get back to it, um, in our next one, or just through other materials, or all, as always, you can just bother me on Telegram. I love that. So, all right, thanks, guys. Uh, we'll see you next time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank y'all.